Okay, Hartley. Okay, Hartley.
Welcome and thank you for choosing FreeConferenceCall.com. You are helping people around the world communicate for free. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. If you are the host, press star now. Otherwise, please enter your PIN followed by the pound or hash. If you do not know your... Please announce yourself.
Wayne Miller?
Hi, Wayne.
Hey, Don, how are you? Okay. Hartley, we good to go?
We're all ready.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the June 9th Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order and do a roll call. Don?
Don Klein, present.
Wayne Miller, present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In two great republics, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight's meeting is the first one we're being recorded. And everybody else is participating remotely. Jim and I are here in the chambers. And Hartley is filming it. Chairman's additions, deletions. I don't have any.
Look, it is an amended agenda. So you'll note that item 3.6 is been amended since the original posting. And that is to sign the election warrant for the municipal election June 29.
Okay. Appointments official, 2.1. Reappoint Ed Herman to the Energy Committee for a three-year term effective July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023. Can I get a motion done?
I make a motion that we appoint Ed Herman to the Energy Committee for a three-year term. We don't have anything else to go with that, right? Effective July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? I'm good. Don, you good?
I'm good, yes, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wayne Miller, aye. Okay, 2.2, appoint Roberto Maldonado as an on-call firefighter. Don, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion we appoint Roberto Maldonado as an on-call firefighter contingent upon passing of a medical exam and query check for the one-year probationary period effective June 9th, 2020.
And I'll second that. Anything to add to this one?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.1, review approve a common license for the VFW Post 6538. Can I get a motion done?
I make a motion that we approve a common vehicle license for the VFW Post 6538 effective June 9th, 2020 through December 11th, excuse me, December 31st, 2020, contingent upon approval of a food permit from the Neshova Board of Health.
And I'll second that. Any discussion on that one?
Yes. I thought that they lost their license. Has this been... They got it back from the alcohol beverage commission?
This is just food, Don.
This is just for the food?
Correct.
Okay.
That's all that's on the thing. Anything else?
No.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Aye. Yes. Okay, 3.2, review approve the request to establish a donation account for the Townsend Rec Department. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I make a motion we approve the request to establish a donation account for the Townsend Recreation Department for the purpose of payroll, uniform, and training for the staff.
And I'll second that. Do you have any more information on this one, Jim?
Just the purpose of the account listed in the packet, just so it's not as limited as the motion was just read. It says staff operations, preparation, retention to include but not limited to payroll, uniforms, training, PPE. So it's not limited to those things, but that's the... The expectation is it's all of those.
Okay. So they're doing like a GoFundMe type thing?
Correct.
Okay. Don, do you have any questions?
Yeah, how have they been doing this in the past? I thought they already had a revolving account.
Yep, they have a revolving acc... Is anybody on the call from Rec? Hearing none. They have a revolving account into which the tuitions or payments for programs they put on go. And because they've been down and unable to perform, they've had no money coming in. So this is a way to actually have a little more flexibility in doing fundraising and have an account into which to put the funds. Because right now, even though in Phase 2, technically recreation could be open, they're not ready or prepared to be open yet. And I'm not certain at what point they will be. So the ability to provide for programs and make money has been severely curtailed.
Yeah, they have some pretty serious restrictions I saw posted, so... Okay. I'm fine with this. Anything else, Don?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3.3, approve... View approve a municipal relief transfer from the Townsend Water Department. Can I get a motion done?
I make a motion we approve a municipal relief transfer for the Townsend Water Department in the amount of $20,000 to be transferred to account number 061-04-000-5300, Professional Services, from account number 061-04-000-5100, Superintendent Salary.
And I'll second that. Don, Jimmy, do you know what this is for?
Yep, this is the superintendent's salary line had an amount in it sufficient to pay for a superintendent for the year. They had Paul while he was here during this fiscal year and then his... Any buyout that he had of accrued time on the books. And then they've had a contract interim superintendent since. And this is money needed to continue to fund that.
Okay. Don, any questions?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Mr. Chairman, there actually was one other that came in just this afternoon from the town accountant. And she was hoping to have you be able to take it up so these can both go to the Finance Committee for the next step. This one is $1,500 to Town Accountant Salary from Town Accountant Professional Services. And it's to pay contractual obligation. So there is a step owed to Lori in this contract year. And it wasn't sufficiently funded, so this actually would make her whole.
Okay, so this is an addition, then?
Correct.
Okay. Don, did you get all that enough to make a motion?
No, I can't. I didn't. Can you do it?
Sure. How do you want to word it?
Make a motion to approve the requested municipal relief transfer of $1,500 from Town Accountant Salary to Town Accountant Professional... Excuse me. To Town Accountant Salary from Town Accountant Professional Services to pay contractual obligation.
I make a motion as read. Can you second that, Don?
Second.
Any questions there?
No.
All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3.4, discussion regarding outside seating for area restaurants. Take it away.
The most recent state of affairs in the Commonwealth for restaurants would allow outdoor seating. So we've moved from the phase that would have allowed just curb service or takeout to outdoor seating. So I think the purpose of having this on the agenda was just to solicit the board's support to all of our local restaurants in doing whatever we can to facilitate them being able to open up and begin to serve outside. They've taken a big hit over the last several months. And we all know how important restaurants are to a vibrant community. So no action required, just an opportunity to talk about it, let people know. If you feel like eating out, please do. Please do it locally. And just maybe a phone call from the office to each of the restaurants that have a license, letting them know that we support them in whatever we can do.
Yeah, I'm 100% behind that. We were talking a little before the meeting started that we're lucky that most of the restaurants in town have outdoor seating already. But I'd ask that the restaurants like Bailey's and Panda Walk reach out to their landlord and know that they have our support to approve any outdoor seating. Don, what are your thoughts are?
I'm all for it. The only question I had was with Panda Walk, that might be kind of difficult unless they secure permission from the the people that manage the plaza.
Yeah, I don't see that they would ever do... I mean, they've been doing takeout right along, so I think that's how they're making their business.
And does this mean that Bailey's can reopen again? Because I know they're closed.
They plan... What I've read online is they're planning to open tomorrow.
Great.
So they'll have all three of their properties up and going, so... And I know Yee's has an outdoor patio back that they've built for this specific piece. So we'll start to get some restaurant revenue back cooking in town. Is that all you need?
Yeah, just if... On behalf of the board, if I can make those outreaches.
There's no regulations required. I see that, you know, the town council gave an opinion on the current state of affairs. But I think we don't have any local ordinances like that by laws.
Nope.
Correct, okay. All right, so we're good on that. 3.5, the big one, COVID-19 updates.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, if I could just kind of walk through some information. First thing, I did receive an email from a member of the Board of Health. And she was looking for some information. And it was... The email is entitled Transparency. So nothing more transparent than live on television. So I do have her specific questions. And I'll just take a moment and work through them. And then it'll be handled in more detail as we go through the pile of documents. But so these questions come in from Board of Health member Linda Johansson. Number one, who decided on the closing of town facilities? And the answer is town hall was closed by a vote of the Board of Selectmen on March 18th, 2020. Disclosure order was continued by vote on April 8th, 2020, and again on May 4th, 2020. It remains in effect. Question number two, who is essential and not? Answer, originally, essential employees were designated as just public safety personnel, water personnel, and executive staff to consider their being in the workplace. Even if irregularly, additional positions were added as we moved through the first week to two weeks. And they include highway, cemetery and parks, Board of Health admin, treasurer, collector, accountant, assessor, and their staff. While public safety never stopped working regular shifts, all other essential positions worked modified shifts to include staggering time in the building and/or remote working from home. Question three, who got paid or not? Answer, every employee has continued to receive pay to include public safety who worked regular shifts, salaried department heads who worked modified shifts, hourly workers who worked modified shifts, hourly workers who worked remotely, and a small number of employees who, due to no fault of their own, did not work. Question four, why the town hall is still not open to employees? Answer, coming up in this pile of documents. And last, why is the town hall still not open to the public? Answer, coming up in this pile of documents. So I did want to just take a moment to highlight a couple of things that I think speak to Ms. Johansson's question. There are two documents that are on the website. One is the original memorandum that went out to all citizens back on March 17th. And then the updated one that went out... Updated one that went out April 9th. And there's also a May 28th article in the MMA, Mass Municipal Association, beacon and on their website. And this was three days after Phase 1 allowing city and town halls to reopen. It is entitled City and Town Halls Allowed to Reopen Under New Rules But Most Proceeding With Caution. Some of the things that I think are particularly relevant in this article, most towns are planning on a gradual return for those employees who have been working remotely. And many plan to continue to have employees work remotely as much as possible. And another section, all of this is local leaders taking a moment to digest the guidance and prepare careful plans rather than rushing to reopen. Most appear to be taking a phased-in approach and are postponing interactions with the public. Additionally, reopening simply to meet a self-imposed date and without all the necessary measures in place, ranging from glass and plexiglass shields to hand sanitizer, is a reopening that leaves everyone more vulnerable to transmission of the virus. And it's possible to have a soft opening in which places such as a town hall are open on a limited basis, such as by appointment, and then to open the building to normal hours, both with social distancing and hygiene protocols in place. Additionally, the Division of Local Services has ruled that one of the requirements for reopening of office space that came out in the Governor's Regulations, specifically the 25% rule, does apply to town halls and city halls. There was some confusion at first as to whether it did or didn't. And then, once we knew that it did, what it actually meant. Did it mean you are limited to 25% of the total number of workers that you would normally have had in the building at any one time? Or 25% per office? And it's been clarified that it's 25% per office. So in the detailed documents in a little bit, we'll get through what that means to us. So there's that. Then there's a survey that's being conducted live and in real time in a Google Docs that's updated anytime somebody logs into it, being done by the Mass Municipal Association as well. As of just before the meeting, I checked on it again. Of 52 communities that have filled out the survey, zero are currently open to the public. And only two are open regularly and full-time with original staff pre-shutdown. So this is a document that I'll email the link to each of you so you'll have the ability to follow it in real time and see what other communities are doing. So just to kind of frame the issue, if there's the thought or the belief that we are somehow behind. It was two weeks ago yesterday that the allowance was made to reopen. In the meantime, you have not everybody in Townsend or everybody in the state, but everybody in the country that is searching for the same equipment, the same supplies and materials in order to affect a safe reopening of their business or their office space. But I'll get into that in a little bit as well. So those are Linda Johansson's questions. So then we go to the actual documents. Starting from the 50,000-foot view, so just broad brushstrokes, you know, people that don't want to read a lot of documentation and detail. This comes compliments of the Town of Westminster, who got it compliments of the City of Beverly. I emailed to each of you, I believe, and you had in your pack it's a copy of a PowerPoint emoji-based document that shows just the basic rules of how to stop the spread, what the virus actually is, about washing your hands and using sanitizers, simple things like not touching your face, eyes, nose, and mouth, as I just tried to lick my finger, that you have to disinfect and clean your work surfaces, avoiding contact, what social distancing means, the face covering rules, self-care. So sleep, eat nutritious food, exercise, reduce stress, stay home if feeling ill. And the last handsome pair of emojis. One looks like Wayne with a golf club and the other is Don in full turnout gear with a briefcase. And it just talks about the fact that we're going to get through this together. So this will go up on the website just as kind of a bit of a lighthearted, but just very 50,000-foot view. Not a lot of detail, but kind of walking through what this is all about. That then gets us to the 10,000-foot view, which is the Phase 1 reopening draft that I emailed out last week. Before going through it, it generated some questions from a different Board of Health member, Chris Janotter. And he asked that I bring his questions up tonight and address them. So I'll do that. So Chris writes that he has a couple of comments on the plan. Social distancing, who will be providing and installing the signs required? Who is supplying face masks? The answer is that we've ordered the signage, masks, and gloves. And the expectation is that by the end of this week, beginning of next week, we'll have all of that supply in hand. So we've ordered it and we'll be installing the signs. Cleaning and disinfecting procedures. Has a cleaning plan been developed that addresses specific times and locations of when the additional cleanings will happen? Yes, before hours cleaning. So consistent with how we're doing it now in the town hall and in the police station and the library, Senior Center. Before hours, the cleaner comes through. A question coming up in a moment is are we bringing additional people on? And the answer is, the expectation pending your support is yes. But I'll get to that in a second. Regular and ongoing high-touch surface cleanings throughout the day. So staff at each facility going through and hitting the doors, door knobs, the windows, the pushplates, the buttons in the elevator, and anything and everything else. And sanitizing, fogging after hours. We have on order two sanitizing foggers. One for the library Senior Center, one for here. The Police Department has ones that they currently use in the vehicles. So after hours, when everybody's out of the building, the entire place would be fogged. So that would be the cleaning plan. The next question is, will the town be hiring additional employees or cleaning service? And we have planned to bring on two additional part-time cleaners pending Board approval to advertise. Six months of funding has been sought from CARES funding through the state. So a little bit later, and under my report, we'll talk about the COVID-19 funds that have been made available by the state. But one of the things that was appropriate to put in for and will be provided is additional cleaning support. Next, he asks about protocols for when an employee tests positive. He writes, who will perform this cleaning? And town employees or contractors? And the answer is, so if an employee tests positive for COVID, there's a protocol listed in the plan about how their workspace will be cleaned and what contact they've had with others and what then spills out of all of that. But specific to the cleaning, it would be town employees pursuant to the United States Department of Labor, Center for Disease Control, and World Health Organization guidelines, all of which are linked in the document. So all of the cleaning staff that we have will have been trained in that. And each individual employee will also have training because, as the policy later states, everybody's got responsibility for their own desk space. So, you know, if you come in and you want to spray down your keyboard and your mouse and your phone, you know, that's on you individually. But people will have that training. General comments, the plan is entitled Phase 1, but the state is now in Phase 2. Are we behind the state in reopening? Just spoke about that a moment ago. No. See the MMA article and the MMA survey. Phase 1, again, was just two weeks ago. And we don't yet have the ability to safely have everybody back in the building. Having said that, while we haven't officially invited everybody back to work, nearly everybody has been back to work. I'd be hard pressed to think of two names that haven't been in and out during the course of this period of time doing work and working remotely from home as well. But until we can safely provide the signage and all of the cleaning and disinfecting that's required under the legitimate reopening plan put out by the governor, we officially can't call it that. Next, he says, the plan does not address playgrounds in town that are now open according to the state. Who will be cleaning the playgrounds and are they actually open now? The answer, playgrounds come under the Elected Parks Commission, and it is that board's call. Just, I will note, just because playgrounds can be opened doesn't mean that they must be open. It remains a local decision for the Parks Commissioners. I mean, it's always been one of those things where it's wide open to the public, yet it's closed. Does that mean that for the past three months, no one has gone on a swing or a slide? Probably not. But again, I'm trying to be respectful of the fact that specifically for cemetery and parks and water and library, that they have elected board members that have that policy jurisdiction. Next, a lot of cleaning of workspaces falls on employees. Will there be any kind of training and how will supplies be ordered and distributed? Within the document, training details are referenced on page 4, page 5, both with graphics and links, under Training for Employees on page 8. And then who is responsible? Page 13, details that department heads are responsible for training their respective employees. And in terms of supplies, as I earlier stated, they've been ordered, are on order, and we are awaiting delivery. Lastly, he writes, this is a plan that the VOS put together. I'm not real comfortable with the Board of Health being listed on the cover since we did not help develop the plan. I responded back and I copied everybody on it because Mr. Janotter copied everybody on his questions. And I made it clear that this isn't a Board of Selectmen plan because you had not yet met to consider it and either amend it, adopt it, or kick it to the curb and send me back for a redo. Similarly, the Board of Health hadn't met yet. So the purpose of a draft plan is to serve as the basis for the respective boards to have a discussion about whether it becomes non-draft and real plan. So to the extent that there was confusion about that when people looked at the document, I did note that while there is a draft watermark on it, it doesn't come up. Something about the formatting, you can see pieces of it in little places. I'd like to say that I'm smart enough with Word to know what that format is that's doing it. But I did write in the email that it was in fact a draft and I was looking for people's comments to determine whether or not people would collectively sign onto it. So to the extent that people believe that I was force-feeding a... So to the extent that people believe that I was force-feeding a document as though it was already somebody's, I apologize for that because that was never the intent.
I do have one comment back to the positive test result thing. I'd like to make sure that that gets part of the state tracking.
Oh, absolutely. Yep. The, in, in the policy, it talks about the fact that the first thing that gets done is a call made to the Board of Health. So Rick Metcalf, our, our local Sanitarian, and then it's in the system from that point forward. So those are Chris's comments. Now to the plan itself. The, the plan is draft. It's written as Phase One reopening, Townsend, June 5th, 2020, listed with Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, the Shoban Associated Boards of Health, Carla as the Health Administrator, and myself as the Town Administrator. You don't realize how many times you lick your fingers to turn a page until you have a mask on. So it's good that I have a mask on. It talks about what the plan is and recognizing values and priorities, best approaches and innovations for municipal offices and programs, and being safe and responsive. Caveat emboldened at the bottom of the first page saying that "All of this information is subject to change based on research and data regarding the novel coronavirus because it's continuing to develop daily." The next page, on page three, you deal with mandatory safety standards for all municipal departments. And it addresses social distancing with details in four bullets, hygiene protocols with three bullets, staffing operations with three bullets, cleaning and disinfecting with three bullets. And then expands on cleaning and disinfecting on the next page, talking about specifically the daily janitorial cleaning being increased, the disinfecting foggers, the high-touch surface areas being listed, tables, doorknobs, light switches, countertops, handles, desks, phones, computers, et cetera. And then it gives a link to the CDC's guidelines on cleaning and disinfecting your facility or workspace. For those that are less with the written word and more with the graphics and the pictures, the very next page has the, the graphic from the CDC on how to clean and disinfect. Next, we get protocols when an employee tests positive. So as it states there, the very first thing is to notify the Townsend Health Department, Rick Metcalf, District Sanitarian, with his phone number. That will then assist the town.
No, we're not moving enough. That happened before.
That's how it is?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. "Assist the Townsend Health Department in determining which employees may have been exposed to the virus and may need to take additional precautions. Clean and disinfect in accordance with the following CDC guidance." So it details if the employee has been there, how recently, for how long, and that will dictate what type of cleaning, and that is all pursuant to the CDC. Additionally, the next page, there's kind of a cheat sheet, bigger font, fewer words, with some graphics making it clear what that cleaning needs to look like. Training for employees, beginning on page eight, it talks about Phase One requirements, social distance, hygiene, cleaning, and disinfecting. And again, on page nine, going to a graphic. And the graphic covers all of those things that are required during Phase One start reopening. Next, you get into the overview of access to town buildings. And right now, unless and until further determined by the Select Board, access to town buildings is limited to department employees only. All public buildings will remain locked during this phase. High-risk individuals should work from home if possible and shall be provided priority consideration for workplace accommodation. Closure of all meeting rooms to outside agencies. Suspension of all nonessential commercial and residential inspections. Inspections conducted without entering an occupancy can still take place. So that's where we've been unofficially in terms of employees. Because as I said, we have had nearly everybody in the building working at one time or another on alternating schedules such that two people aren't in the same space at the same time.
Okay.
Next, you get to self-certifying. The long and the short of this is each employee is required to self-certify at the beginning of each day that they have had no signs of fever or temperature above 100.3, severe persistent cough, trouble breathing within the past 24 hours, have not had close contact with somebody who has had those symptoms or has been tested for or diagnosed with COVID-19, have not been asked to self-isolate or quarantine by their doctor or local public health official. So employees that are exhibiting symptoms or unable to self-certify should be directed to leave the work site and seek medical attention and applicable testing by their healthcare provider. They are not to return to work until cleared by their local Board of Health. Next, we have social distancing. This goes to the 25% rule that I referenced a little bit earlier. So if you take each of our departments, for instance, assessors, normal capacity is two. 25% of two is a half a person, obviously, so we're going to be at one. Building and health is a curious one. Building and health, we have three people. We have the Health Administrator, we have the Administrative Assistant to the Building Department, and the Building Commissioner. So again, that would be one at 25%. I received an email just today, three emails on the subject. First from Carla, the Health Administrator, saying that she would request consideration on this because when she's in, she has, she has a separate office and has her door closed. When the Building Commissioner's in, he has a separate office and has the door closed. And the Administrative Assistant is sitting in the middle, doesn't have the ability to close off an office, but would be herself one person. So the law does allow a declaration made locally that building and health departments can be deemed essential for the purpose of a waiver of the 25% rule. So I would look for the board's consideration, aside from any other votes on policies or, or plans this evening, to do that, just so we do have the ability to have those people working in this space. Dawn, are you okay with that?
I am too. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Excellent. It doesn't stipulate that it has to be the, the Board of Selectmen or an admin like me. So I've got it written up that, I'll have it written that I've spoken to you, you support it, and that, that's how it's going to be. Next, we get to land use. There are four at any given time, so that would be limited to one at a time. Executive assistant, there's one, so it would be one. Accounting, two, so it would be one. The recreation, four, would be limited to one. Clerk, two, would be limited to one. Treasurer Collector, three, limited to one. And Veterans, one, limited to one. So what you see here pretty quickly is that each office in our facility at any given time will be limited to just one person, with the exception of the carve-out of building and Board of Health that we just discussed. That doesn't mean that two other people or one other person are, you know, off, you know, at the beach or, you know, rearranging their software. They are pursuant to the more detailed policy that'll follow, because this, again, is the 10,000-foot view. They will either be working remotely still or reassigned to another space within the building where they can work.
Yeah, I was just going to say that because we have, I mean, this room is not used during the day.
This room, we've got Meeting Room Two. When we get to a phase for opening to the public, Meeting Room Two becomes a little trickier because that may be a meeting place for public that comes in to deal with a specific department. So we may have that room carved out, but this room is definitely available. So just because it says one, the point I'm making is, doesn't mean that others are not working. Social distancing.
Can I ask a question? This is Kathy Spofford.
Sure, go ahead, Kathy.
So in our office, as you know, we have an upcoming election, and it's getting very difficult for us to only be working half-days. For each of us, just comes in from one to four. I'm there from 8:30 to one. And I do have the ability to close my office door. So would that be okay if, in fact, we were both there today because we had a Zoom conference. Would it be with your approval that we can both be there at the same time, social distancing?
I, I can tell you, Kathy, that I've not seen the Town Clerk's office specifically in the list of ones that can be so considered. But it sure makes sense to be able to do that. So maybe if the board supports that, we can just get that statement this evening and then you and I can coordinate the details.
If it's.
Okay, because from my understanding, elections was essential. So.
I'm for allowing that temporarily. I'm, I'm all for allowing that temporarily until, at least until the election is complete. Then we can revisit it.
Okay.
I am too. Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the actual guidance from the state. It's been determined that the municipality may determine that a municipal office can exceed the maximum occupancy level if the municipality determines that it is in the interest of public health or safety considerations. Or where strict compliance may interfere with the town's ability to continue delivery of a critical service as determined by the municipality. So I would say an upcoming election is a fairly critical service. So it seems like this, this could be fit into that caveat pretty well.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
So again, social distancing ideas about not just six feet away, but staggering work schedules, meeting sizes, staggering lunch breaks, break times, meal prep being done at home and, you know, don't have people congregating upstairs, and minimize use of combined spaces, elevators, control rooms, et cetera. So these are all things that have become part of a regulation and they would be posting for. Additional guidance, this just talks in more detail about the specific things, the types of sanitizers to use, the amount of time to wash your hands, those types of things that we've all learned more than we probably did in kindergarten about in the last three months. It does specify there that department heads are responsible for their employees' training. Senior Center and Library. Senior Center is, is written, "The Senior Center should continue to follow Mass DPH Guidance for Community Day Program Settings," which is what they've been doing. "And the Senior Center should remain closed to the public and continue remote activities or check-ins with seniors." So again, we're dealing with Phase One now, which doesn't contemplate opening to the public yet. And then, "The staff may return to work as needed, but must follow the 25% maximum occupancy guidelines earlier discussed." Library, also remaining closed to the public, will continue operating curbside pickup and delivery only. And once returning to work, need to follow the 25% maximum occupancy guidelines as earlier discussed. So that building, those two functions, would continue much like they are right now and has been voted by the library and council, library trustees and council aging. Additional phases, under the governor's reopening plan, Phase Two, cautious, specific guidance is coming out, was just issued last Friday. Phase Three, vigilant, not yet to come. And Phase Four, a new normal. So we're still waiting on more specific guidance on cautious, and we've not yet received hardly anything on vigilant or new normal. The last page, or a couple of links, where building inspections, information for local boards of health, and information for beaches, parks, and recreation can be found. So this document, if, if it or some version of it meets your satisfaction, we would have uploaded to the website. So anything that's a live hyperlink in the document, people would be able to work through and get off to those respective.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I just asked that the Board of Health consider this in their next meeting as well, so we can have a joint vote to adopt. Dawn, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay.
If, if it pleases the board, for the, for the time being, if I could take Board of Health off and get it up online, I could make a note pending, you know, consideration of approval by the Board of Health, so people know that they're involved. But I just think the sooner we get it up, there are people that go up multiple times a day to see what we've got up there.
I would definitely look to get that out there as a draft, at least.
Yeah, I agree.
Excellent. Under Phase One reopening, there is a mandatory self-certification for employers that's required. We're required to have created a COVID-19 plan template. Doesn't need to be submitted to any state agency or federal agency, but needs to be on hand if it's asked to be seen. That's a specific form and format and.
Just saw it today at the dentist, so.
Yeah, yep, so that's, that's actually on file. Compliance attestation poster, we're required to post in a place where we normally post employee signs, like, you know, workers' comp and employee assistance program and those types of things. A poster that shows our compliance with that requirement to have a control plan in place. That is a poster that's been ordered through the state's printing office and should be here in three to five days, they said. Additional posters that aren't required, but that are encouraged. We'll also have regarding social distancing, hygiene protocols, cleaning and disinfecting. We'll have directional signage that'll be coming in within the week that'll indicate how the, the traffic flow, the foot flow is to be within the building. The, the plan at this point, unless somebody has a considerably greater idea, is to have access from the parking lot door closest to the rec center, the road, which is the one that people normally come in and out of. There would be directional signage posted showing arrows that the traffic flow for visitors would be down the hallway, around the loop, and then back down the side hallway. And it comes out also in the parking lot, but on the door that is closer to the municipal garage. That way, you don't have people walking in and others walking out where they're in a, you know, four-and-a-half-foot hallway and, you know, they'd be both facing each other. Part of the recommendation from the Commonwealth is, to the extent that you can have one-way traffic flow, like in the grocery stores, you should produce signage for it, so that would be the intention there. So that signage is on the way. Next, we get down to the 5,000-foot view, which is a document, general on-the-job guidance to prevent exposure and limit the transmission of COVID-19. And this is more geared toward the specific employee looking at this document. No handshaking, washing hands, job site developing cleaning and deep contamination procedures. No congregation, avoid face-to-face meetings, conference calls, no meetings of people more than 10 if they're required at all. Restroom facilities, cleaning, hand sanitizer, paper towels, surfaces, common areas. So it goes through, you know, use your own water bottle, do not share, some pretty common sense things. So this gets down to the, a much more granular level to the employees and their respective obligations. There's an additional piece here for employees that aren't working in the office buildings, but are working out on, on job sites, whether it's highway, water, cemetery, parks. And it talks about machines and vehicles and not riding together and those types of things. And lastly, we get to the, the 1,000-foot view. This gets very granular and talks about the official return to work vote under Phase One. And does so with, I think, excruciating detail that goes from self-certification to procedures while at work, protocol for employees who exhibit or experience symptoms while at work, cleaning and cleanliness, vehicles, equipment, and tools, protocols and procedures for an employee that has tested positive, with breakdown further on positive case with no symptoms, clinically diagnosed case, quarantine, quarantine and develop symptoms, and other staff who have been within six feet. And then it transitions into procedures for a public opening. It reads, "Please note these protocols are subject to change as new information is received from the Commonwealth Town Hall." So this is the, the nitty-gritty. "Town Hall shall remain closed to the general public until further notice." So that's where we are now. We're in Phase, Phase One. We're doing the soft opening for employees once we have all of the equipment, signage, and supplies in hand. "Upon reopening to the public, all visitors shall enter the building through the rear door closest to the street." A note, question mark, by appointment only, softer reopening. Some communities are contemplating for a period of time having appointment only. So if you, if you want to visit the town hall to conduct some business, you'd call, you'd make an appointment. an appointment, and you'd get put on the schedule. We would have a room available for you. You're 10:15 on Tuesday, you'd buzz in, you'd be let in, you'd go to a meeting room two downstairs, and the appropriate staff person would assist you at the appropriate social distance. If we don't want to do by appointment only, the rest of this still applies. All visitors will press the intercom button and be directed from there by a staff member. We have on order and expected to be installed within the next 10 days, a system that interfaces with our current door access system for the Town Hall. So where you have your fobs, the same company has an additional component that would be from the outside person walking in. It would be a button and a speaker, basically like any, you know, school that you're trying to go into, you know, after the, you know, the doors are locked. It would ring in two places, yet to be determined, but two places that would be the ones most likely to be seeing traffic. And the person would say, you know, "Want to come and pay my excise bill." Okay, there's actually somebody in that space right now, and it's not big enough to have another customer yet, so feel free to have a seat on the bench. We'll be with you in a moment, and when it's clear for them to come in, you buzz them in, they come in, and the policy continues. The staff member will keep a log of visitors, and the log will be used for tracing of contacts if necessary. So obviously, if we're having foot flow coming through the building and everybody is just going about their business and you don't realize that somebody that's coming through has a fever, and the next thing you know, somebody in the building becomes symptomatic, you want to know who they've been exposed to. So this would allow that. Visitors would be asked at that time to self-certify. I've got a note here, if allowed by council. That's one that... I don't think you could compel somebody.
Well, it's the same with the mask, right?
Well, the masks, they can say for medical reason, they can't wear it. And you can't question that.
That's as far as you can go, right?
But if they just say, "I'm not wearing one." Well, do you have a medical reason? "No, I just don't want to wear one." Then you can't let them in the building. So, that's masks. So, visitors will be asked to self-certify to the extent that, and we'll find out if that is allowed before that bullet becomes final. Visitors must wear a mask. Masks will be made available to visitors who do not have one. So we do have a supply stock of masks and gloves, so they'll be made available to visitors when they're being let in.
Okay.
"All business shall be conducted on the first floor." Question again, appointment only or not, so we can have that discussion. And we encourage residents to continue to use online resources and the Dropbox at Town Hall. Next, upon calling for an appointment, if in fact it's appointment only, a need will be triggered, excuse me, will be triaged, and all attempts will be made to complete the town business remotely. So if somebody calls, if we're going appointment only, and somebody calls and says, you know, "I'd like to have an appointment to come in and pay my taxes," we can say, "Well, are you aware that you can pay them online? Are you aware that if you don't want to do that, you can come to the Town Hall and use the Dropbox?" So we may still yet be able to do things remotely. The employee who answers the intercom will call the employee with whom the business will be conducted, and the visitor will be provided directions to their office over the intercom and buzzed in. So the door will be locked. When you get buzzed in at the appropriate time, you'll be told where your offices you're going, and you'll follow your signs. Clear partitions shall be installed on each counter to protect employees interacting with the public. A good number of those are already in place, if you've walked through the Town Hall, you've seen. The unisex restroom located on the first floor will be available to the public, will be limited to the public. Employees will have other designated restrooms, that will be one that is available to the public. The roving cleaning person will be very mindful of when that door is being opened and closed and when it needs to be sanitized. If a resident needs to interact with someone outside of the immediate first-floor area, then that employee would be called to the first-floor meeting room. So if somebody comes in and says they need to talk to the Board of Health, that subject then morphs into needing to talk to me or someone from land use, will get called downstairs. So again, we're limiting the traffic flow, the foot flow, in that back door, down around a horseshoe, and back out, the second back door into the same parking lot.
Okay.
No cash will be accepted. Again, this is one of the recommendations that comes in, is cash is dirty, and I'm not certain that a debit card or a check is any cleaner, but that is one of the things they highlight. "All visitors will exit the building through the rear exit furthest from the street, closest to the municipal garage, and directional informational stanchions and signage will be used for the flow of visitors." So that's the Town Hall. Police station, "Any non-police department employee of the town of Townsend or any contractor who is working for the town must dawn appropriate PPE as required by the Board of Health." So particularly, you'll see with police and fire, the next two, because it is so imperative that we do everything we can to keep those employees healthy because of the nature of the work they're doing, 24/7, you know, essential workforce, the true municipal essential employees. If you're going to be in there, you've got to be in there only with permission, and you've got to have PPE as required by the Board of Health. Recreation Center, "The building shall remain closed to the public until further notice. Plans for summer programming are contingent upon guidance from the Governor's Office." So that's still at play, and I know that the Recreation Commission has done some work on a reopening plan, and I expect that that'll be something we'll be talking about at the next meeting.
Okay.
We're next getting to the library and senior center, and they are, as we've earlier discussed, and highway, public access limited to appointments only, plastic petitions installed at any public-facing desk. So again, there's not a lot of foot traffic there, but to the extent that there is, we need to cover it that way. Essential department list, we talked about a moment ago with Kathy. The town does have the ability to override that 25% employee rule, and in this case, for health and building, and now town clerk, that'll be the case here locally. So the types of signs, "Are you sick?" signs, COVID education signs, social distancing, number restrictions, "Do not enter," "Staff only," "Mask required," reminder of disinfecting, elevator one-person signs, copier room, elevator mailroom one-person, prop open doors with "Staff only" signs, signs made by the state. There's a great printing division that the state has that makes the stuff available, very quick turnaround.
Okay.
Senior Center, one person, a time in the bathroom. Short checklist of to-do before employees return to work. The expectation will be 6:15, so that's next Monday. It may be pushed a little bit depending on when the materials come in. They should be in by the end of the week, but obviously if they're not, we have to play that by ear. So the educational materials, supplies, masks, gloves, cleaning supplies, signage, and we create the employee log and policy for department heads, staff level, the policy for department heads when employee calls in sick that's consistent with this guidance. And then, lastly, to-do before opening to the public, installation of the plastic shields, setting up the intercom buzzer, creating barriers to reduce public access to certain building areas. For instance, if you walk into the town clerk's office today, you're walking into a wide-open space with a desk and a clear path to walk further into the office and further again into the back office. We've done a little bit of temporary work with just hanging a chain, but this would contemplate doing something more substantive counterwise. The land use office is another. If you walk into the land use office around that right angle hallway, you come right into an open space where you're in for employees' specific workspace. So whether it's a drop counter that comes down at the door there at the end of the hallway or some other configuration. Also, consideration for the selectmen's office. People will come regularly to speak with Carolyn. If she's sitting at her desk and they're standing up, even a plastic shield isn't going to do the trick unless it goes all the way to the ceiling because they're higher than she is. So there's some consideration about whether or not a Dutch door in the doorway, replacing the door with a Dutch door such that the top is open, there's a counter on the backside of that door that sticks out, and people can come up to the door and transact their business. So a couple of different things are being looked at by both from facilities in that regard. And public sign-in log, the public flow stanchions and signage, and masks and other PPP being available.
Jim, this is Linda Johansson. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, Linda.
Just the thing that popped in my head as you went through this is there was no mention of taking temperatures of employees. Was that discussed? There's some kind of, I'm going to pop them out and then you can answer. UV equipment for disinfecting stuff like money or whatever that's being handled or just gloves? Why can't they use gloves to handle cash and credit cards and throw them away? And then, the Dutch door just popped in my head is like, you're talking about an office space, but when you said open to the public, are you also talking about still making appointments? And why couldn't you use a conference room and stay six feet away instead of configuring a door?
Yep, I think I'll... I heard him in rapid fire, so why don't you give them to me one at a time now? And I'll answer.
Okay, so was there any discussion about taking employee temperatures as part of your plan?
No, in fact, in each of the calls that I've been on with other communities, the consensus has landed on self-certification. So each morning, each employee would have to self-certify, and, you know, that's, if you're lying about that, not only are you jeopardizing your own health, but, you know, your coworkers, that'd be a serious thing. So self-certifying versus actually becoming medically involved in people each day that they come into work.
They may want to recommend they take their temperature before they leave the home. I don't know, just if that helps. So, and then, the other one was like, any consideration of UV equipment type of stuff too? You know, some of them are boxes, some of them are bars where you just run it over the material, like cash or whatever, so that it kills all the germs.
I can tell you, Linda, that I'm embarrassed to say I have not even had that remotely on my radar screen. I've, in all the conversations I've had, it's been, it's been the disinfecting fogger that has been the most extravagant type of thing, other than common sense, bar soap and 70% alcohol.
And Linda, even the use of a UV, it's got to be, it's got to be for a period of time, you're just not running underneath it.
Correct. Say it takes five minutes, you know, and you don't want to, you know, customer waiting, resident waiting five minutes. But if you took the cash wearing gloves and then you ran it through UV, then they, then you can handle it after. I'm just throwing it out there. It's not even something we discussed with Board of Health. I'm just popped in my head.
I'd settle for the no cash at this point, and we can work towards that further down the road, but...
Yeah, and then the other question, that's what I had, is why wouldn't you be using gloves to handle the cash or the credit cards? Or would you should be, right? I mean, is that part of the plan?
It is.
Okay.
The PPE masks and gloves will be supplied by the town. We have them, we have some in stock, and we have a significant supply that's on order and due by the end of the week. And that would be the requirement that, you know, if you're dealing with the public directly, that you've got gloves. Obviously, if you're someone like me that's not dealing with the public and handing things back and forth, you wouldn't expect to see me wearing gloves at my desk, but we would be not only requiring that of people having direct interaction, but we'd be providing it as well.
Don, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I'm fine with what we've discussed.
Do you need something from us for this?
Yeah, just a blessing to post. I'll get that one question clarified from council regarding self-certification of visitors, whether that can be an ask or not. I mean, we don't want to get into HIPAA stuff, you know, but to the extent that it can be, you don't have to answer, but if you don't mind, you know, have you had a fever type of thing.
I'm fine with posting, Don. How about you?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Excellent. In terms of timing for reopening to the public, the more granular, the 1,000-foot document that we just spent some time on gives us the roadmap to do that and gives us the specific to-do list to do that. One of the recommendations that came in through the governor's overarching reopening plan is to try to generally have a three-week period between increments. So if we are good to go for having all employees, not just non-essential, but all employees back in place by the 15th, if we take three weeks from the 15th to finalize, fine-tune, and open to the public, is that something that seems like a fair and reasonable target for you?
Yeah, it might be sooner, just based on, I'd like at least a week to get a dry run on, you know, the procedures and getting it in place and try to run through some scenarios of that. I don't want to push it out too far if we don't need to. Don, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think that, you know, once we start into this phase and get our act together for the next one, that we should open up as soon as possible for the public because I think they're getting antsy.
Yeah, maybe we can... Maybe we can revisit it at our next meeting in two weeks.
Okay, yeah. So 15th target, all things being in place, and then, two weeks would be the 29th, which is the day of the election, which we're going to have people here, so maybe that is, maybe that's a good synergy then.
Let's try to meet the week of the 22nd.
Okay.
And then, we can go from there.
Okay.
That at least give us a full week of...
Yeah, one question, Kathy, I don't know if you're still on the call, but one question that Kathy had was, it was actually more of a request, is if we are open to the public on the day of the election, could we close to the public on the day of the election?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
But for voting, because it's going to be a cluster of moving parts trying to get people in and out.
I would recommend doing that, yes.
So...
Especially with the taxes due on the 30th.
Right.
But I'm also thinking, if we aren't closed to the public, that the, anybody who's coming into the office probably shouldn't come in because people will be banging on their doors.
Right. So if we...
I'm in agreement that we should close the Town Hall to everything except the election.
So maybe if instead of forecasting three weeks out, if we forecast two weeks out from the 15th, that puts us the day after the election. So a two-week period, so we'd have a two-week run of all employees back, getting everything prepped for public, and then the day after the election where all systems go.
I'd say that's a good plan.
You good for that, Don?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
Can I make a comment here, though?
Sure, Kathy.
The day after the election, are we going to have a total cleaning of Town Hall where we're going to have so many people coming through?
Yes. Yep, that night, we're getting pizza, and, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, that night, we'll have, we'll have the whole place gone through. Whether we were opening to the public or not, we'd still be having employees back in the next day, and the same thing, the same thing would stand.
One question for that two-week period, did you say after the election, have another meeting?
No, Wayne was saying, Wayne was saying have a meeting next, two weeks from today, have a meeting. Well, let me look again. Yeah, the 23rd, have a meeting, but my thought was, if we have our all employees on board by the 15th, two weeks from that is the election, the very next day, we'd be open to the public, the 30th. So it's two weeks of all employees in before we open to the public.
Okay.
Okay.
Lovely.
Anything else?
I believe, under COVID, let me just see. Yeah, I've got other COVID budget stuff later, but that's it for that.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's move on to 36. Review signed the June 29, 2020 election warrant for posting. Don, can I get a motion?
I make the motion that we sign the June 29, 2020 election warrant for posting.
And you want to do that out of session since you're not here?
Ah, yes, can we do that out of session? Kathy? Is she still in?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Can I come in the very first thing in the morning? Because I'm leaving and I'll be out of town for a few days.
Um, can, Jim, can that be put in my mailbox?
Well, we'll have it upstairs on your desk, Don.
Okay, I'll sign it up there.
Okay, I second that motion then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, work sessions, town administrator updates and reports. Back to you, Jim.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, personnel updates. A couple of things. We've received a resignation from Lee Redden, who was working jointly in our highway department and conservation doing admin work. She has some family, family stuff that is making it very difficult for her to have the hours to put in.
Okay.
So I'd like to send a note off to her with your approval, just thanking her.
Yes, absolutely.
She stepped well out of the box of what she was here to do and helped us on some things.
Yeah, she did a lot.
From IT, so. Additionally, we've received a letter of resignation from our interim building commissioner, Bentley Hergit. And I did have some discussion with each of you individually, but it's, I think, necessary to have a discussion with you collectively in this public meeting about your interests moving forward. The position was posted as will remain open until filled, which means we can still take a resume if there's somebody that still has an interest. The way the process was voted by the board at your March 10th meeting was that the resumes would be screened at the staff level with assistance from department personnel in that office, as well as the ZBA specifically being the board that interfaces most regularly with the building commissioner. And in fact, we had personnel participate in the interview process. The question now is what do you want to do moving forward? Do you want to continue with that same process? There, there is a, was, I don't know if he's still interested, but there was a very close second in the list of people that were interviewed. The only reason he was not given preference over Bentley was because Bentley had been an interim for us, or an alternate, excuse me, for us for 15 years, so he had kind of an insider's track. I'm also aware that there may be another candidate that is appropriately certified that might have an interest in submitting, that didn't in the earlier round. So my hope, my recommendation would be that we, we throw out a quick refresher, letting people know that the position is open. We put a very narrow timeframe on it for consideration. So if, for instance, the one gentleman that I'm talking about that has an interest, is interested, you know, get it in, let us know. And that we consider whatever we have at the end of that very narrow window, and similarly with the same input from staff, and make recommendation to the board. It'd be at that point, I know, Don, you specifically were hoping for some more board, board interaction in the process. So I don't know if you'd like at that point, whatever the recommended candidate is to have them before you for an interview, or if you'd rather discard the staff-level screening and recommendation and have that become a board matter in total.
It would be, if we're, if we're going to the outside now for, for this position, if there was gonna be more than, you know, two or three candidates, then I would still do having the same process that we had put in place. But if there is one or two candidates, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I think they should come before the board. And any questions that the, the people that would normally have been on the other process could, could submit to us, to, for, for us to ask at our interviews. That would be my preference, but I'll, you know, I want to hear from Wayne.
I really don't care. I mean, I don't think we should deviate from what we had planned in the first place. And I'm offered, if you feel the need for a second set of interviews with us, I don't see the harm if it's just one or two candidates anyway. I won't have a lot to ask. I don't know what to, I'm not gonna lie here, I wouldn't even know the first thing to ask a building commissioner as to what makes them qualified.
Either way, it's fine with me. If Wayne is okay with that, then, then I'm fine with it too, man.
Okay, so we have one, we have one active and recommendable candidate. We'll put a caller on a couple of weeks and see if, if anything else pops out of the bushes. And then you'll hear back from the staff level with recommendation from there.
I would just recommend reaching out to that other gentleman to make sure he's still...
Yep, yep, absolutely. Excellent.
Okay.
So that's it for personnel. We next get to the Collins Center report update. I emailed each of you a copy of the Collins Center's report. At the time, was called final, but there were two, two areas that needed to have a slight change made that have since been changed. One was a title was not correctly identified. And the other was in their spreadsheet on implementation costs. There was a blank cell that didn't have a current rate of pay. So when you put in the new rate of pay, it looked like a 100% increase. So with those two minor exceptions, the document that you had is the final. And it's not a surprise, I think. I don't know how much time you spent looking through it. If I'd have been made to handicap what I thought the results were gonna be going into it, what positions were likely underpaid against the marketplace and which ones we were doing all right on, I might have come pretty close to the ones that, in fact, the data bears out. There's obviously a great deal of interest in this from the employees and the union groups. As you know, everybody is open and at the table, even though with, with the pandemic, all of that has been on hiatus as, as well as many other things. But the data is the data. There's no requirement that the board adopt and implement that plan. I think particularly when we talk in a moment about the budget moving forward, particularly based on the pandemic and the impacts we're seeing, we should take great care in making any decisions on salaries moving forward. But this is the first public meeting we've had since the receipt of the plan, and I know people are anxiously waiting to see it. So I'd like to be able to distribute it to employees for review and put it up on the website for the public to review.
With the caveat that we have not, nor are we under any obligation to do that.
Absolutely, it is.
I don't want somebody to see that, oh, I should be getting a raise.
Right.
We're just not in a financial position to do that right now.
Right, don't buy, don't buy a new car or go on vacation with what that document says.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Don, are you okay with that?
Yeah, excuse me, I'm okay with that, because I think it's important for them to see this. But at the same time, I'm not willing or ready to move ahead with anything that's in here until we know where we are financially.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think if, if something is done with it in the shorter term, rather than what happened with the last one, which was it became a very long-term period of time and it hadn't been addressed, I think we're okay. You know, if, if it's not addressed in the short term, it's not gonna get better. And we know that when we next brush it off and have it updated, we're gonna most likely be further behind the eight ball in terms of competitiveness. So I guess I would just, you know, I'd want people to understand that while there's not going to be a rush to blindly implement, it will be being considered as a part of our overall financial plan.
Yeah, and I think I'd, I'd like to see it taken in phases too, so, so we could do it stepwise and not overdo it. Just based on our money situation right now.
Understood, okay. And then we get to 4.13, finance updates, FY '20 budget and COVID-19 expenses. At our last couple of meetings, I've given you updates on the fact that our FY '20 budget was being managed very tightly, was being monitored on a nearly hourly basis by Lori, the town accountant, who does a fabulous job for us. And we did issue a spending freeze memorandum more than a month ago. Any expenditure that was non-contractual, over $500 required prior authorization. There are line items in the budget that have been identified, having been combed by both Lori and myself, that are running surplus, that we were tagging and flagging in case revenue took a hit based on the pandemic and didn't come in where we had expected, which would have knocked us out of balance, or in other areas where expenses were understandably coming in higher related to the pandemic. A couple of things have happened that have brought better focus, even since last week when we talked. One is that revenues are, are looking like we're going to be relatively on target, all things considered. And expenses, we are with the, the discipline of the department heads, following the, following the, the guidance that was put out regarding expenses. Lori feels comfortable, and I confirmed with her again just before coming into the meeting tonight, that we're gonna be okay, we're gonna make it. Which is not the same for a lot of communities, given what's gone on in the last three months. Communities specifically that are more reliant on things like hotel and restaurant tax as a revenue have, have taken an absolute beating. The other thing that gives Lori comfort in this is the CARES Act, the federal act that provides economic relief to businesses and residents of the country. Had a component that carved off an amount of money that went from the federal government to state governments to then be distributed to local cities and towns. The Department of, Division of Local Services had determined how they were gonna do that. They put out a guidance on it. They had, an attachment to the guidance listed eligible expenses that would be of two different things. One would be things that the federal government would reimburse for 75%. They would make eligible reimbursement of the balance of the 25%. So for things like rental space for public safety personnel that had been exposed and could not fairly be asked to go home at the end of a shift. So if we incurred expenses for that, FEMA would reimburse 75%, now the state will pick up the 25%. Additionally, the state guidance comes out with things that are not covered by FEMA at all, that they will cover 100%. Things like laptops. So if you needed to purchase two laptops for telecommuting purposes, so your XYZ employee, you know, can be dialed in from home, that is reimbursable. The cost of PPE, the personal protective equipment, cleaning, there's a whole list of things that are eligible, are reimbursable. They took the total amount available to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts from the federal government, used the formula they used to determine how money gets distributed to cities and towns, and they came up with $800,000 available for the town of Townsend.
That's awesome.
Now, we're not gonna spend $800,000 on COVID-19-related expenditures. Now, some cities and towns are putting in for the moon with the hopes that they'll just get it because, hey, the money's there. Lori has been very active with her association of city and town accountants and getting a message that has only once been acknowledged publicly in a webinar that is put on by the state that is available online, but has been talked about a great deal unofficially, which is the amount of money allocated to each community, while today is categorized as for covering expenses related to COVID-19, may morph into being funding available to cover revenue deficits for COVID-19. So those that might go off willy-nilly and try to spend every nickel on things that aren't necessarily within the guidance may find themselves at the end of the day not having money for the revenue deficit that is hurting them quite more than the need for, you know, a case of widgets.
Yeah.
So Lori is monitoring that very closely, but as of right now, a list of about a quarter of a million dollars worth of equipment and other eligible expenses fits the bill. This then becomes a question that was the subject of a conference call I was on yesterday with Brad Morgan, our superintendent, Nancy Haynes, the school business manager, and my counterpart, Andrew McLean in Pepperell. And regional school districts are kind of left out in the cold in this whole formula. In a city that has its own school, City of Pittsburgh, City of Leominster, their school is a department in the community that is eligible to submit for reimbursement and coverage under this pot of money. Regional school districts have expressly been advised, excuse me, we have expressly been revised that regional school districts aren't to access this and that they have their own funding resources. But there have been mixed messages on that as well. So in the conversation with Brad and Nancy and Andrew yesterday, the question becomes whether or not the respective towns, Ashby, Townsend, and Pepperell, are willing to entertain the school in some of their requests that fit within the guidance. Because again, it's written with a couple of specific school-related approvals. One is if there are additional expenses for tele-education, if there are expenses for special education, for food, people, students that normally receive food at school, and there have been additional expenses for that. So those are education-specific. So they're interested in submitting for reimbursement or funding through the towns, out of the towns' respective buckets.
What about their other resources you just mentioned?
When I spoke with them yesterday, there's, there are a couple of, a couple of funding sources that they referenced have been made available to them, but that don't get anywhere near the amount of money they need. Example, they, they need Chromebooks for each student. And at $300 apiece, I'm going from memory, you know, X thousand of them, you know, that's $80,000 is coming to mind, you know, for Chromebooks. Another $30,000 for laptops for staff to be able to accommodate what might be, what's likely to be a hybrid education come the fall. There's another $100,000 expense that they're short to do network work in buildings throughout the district to make every corner and cranny Wi-Fi accessible so they can, they can effectively communicate with the students from every building and every space. There were a couple of other specific categories that they submitted requests on. For us, it would be about a $200,000, you know, if you take our 40% roughly, the percentage that we reflected of the district in the assessment, it'd be about $200,000 of the eight that's available to us, of which we've put in for roughly a quarter of a million ourselves. So 450, call it 500,000, we'd have roughly 300,000 left hanging out there, ideally to be able to see come back as available for any revenue deficit that we see at the end of this year or might see going off into next year, depending on what happens. So I don't know what your thoughts are on school in or school out.
Don?
I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards giving it to them, but the question, I, I've sat in on a couple of MMA calls with Sean Cronin. This was brought up by a number of communities that are in the same situation. I thought he was going back to the state to try to get some clarification, but I hadn't heard any... but I hadn't heard anything that had you, Jim?
I've not, but Andrew McLean on the call yesterday said that he heard clarification in another call just last week that it was not intended to be funding for regional school districts. Now, having said that, Andrew has said that Pepperell is going to allow the schools' request to pass through to their allocation. To kind of color in the the bigger picture here, I said on the call that we shouldn't be having this conversation without talking about the bigger issue, which is the fiscal twenty-one budget. Now, you may recall, and it's, I know it's been a while since we've had the discussions, but before this pandemic rounded us to a to a standstill almost here, we had a budget that was, for all intents and purposes, balanced, fully accommodating the request of the school district for an additional five hundred thousand plus dollars in our assessment this year. So the third year running of a half million dollar increase to our assessment. Now, all in, real estate taxes and expected local aid and all of our local receipts, we raise maybe slightly north of five hundred thousand dollars year over year. So we were prepared to move forward with a budget that gave all of our available new revenue from all sources to the school. I said, given everything I've heard regarding twenty-one and that state aid cuts are likely, though we've not had confirmation yet, that we've seen a drop-off in local receipts, which may carry forward, may not, we don't know. The fact that that excise taxes are down, is that because car dealerships have been closed for a couple of months? Some people can't buy cars? Does that mean there's pent-up demand and once they get to open that we're gonna see double and triple? We just don't know. So I did tell Brad that I wasn't going to be able with a straight face recommend that the school budget as submitted be the budget that goes forward when we have town meeting. Because it's not fair to all of the other municipal functions. Public safety, public works, public administration, health, I mean, all of those other very real budget requirements that we have to address shouldn't be the ones to take the the short end of the stick if, in fact, the revenues are cut. Brad's response was he couldn't foresee a way, conceivable way to cut the budget. Which, from his perspective, I understand, if they go to a if they go to a hybrid learning model in the fall that requires teachers to be in the classroom, in contact with the student body, the state, Department of Education, Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, have been indicating that districts could see as much as a twenty percent absentee rate from teachers that are either immunocompromised or otherwise in a a classification that would have them be at risk if Corona rebounds in the fall. And what would he do if he had twenty percent of his staff that are certified to teach subjects disappear? You can't fill that with with substitutes. You 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 only have so many other bodies to try to shift the workload around. If, in fact, you have social distancing requirements as well, that then could be extrapolated to to dictate class sizes. He said, I I don't know how we're gonna do it. No less could I consider trying to figure out how to do it with less money? And I said, well, I can empathize. Education is but one of the pieces of our overall budget.
And I'm for allowing them to jump on with our piece too, but with some revisions, revisitation of their budget, because if it is the hybrid type, you know, three days on, two days off, that I've been kind of hearing rumblings of, that bus contract should be revisited. I mean, that's gotta be, I mean, they, the bus company was off all spring. It's still fully paid. I can't see paying full, full week's worth of work for three days worth of operation. So I'd like to ask him to sharpen his pencil and at least try. Might only comment to the the ask of, you know, three hundred Chromebooks or whatever it might be, is to actually provide some hard data, because my daughter has a Chromebook. She does not need a new one. I don't need two. And I think the majority of most of the people in the high school have some sort of laptop or or Chromebook already. So that's just a redundancy that I don't think we need. So I'd like to see some more hard, concrete data-driven requests instead of any three hundred.
Right. Well, the the original request for funding or reimbursement was due last Friday. So a ton of folks, myself included, gathered all the data from the departments, put it in the appropriate boxes and submitted it, only to find out later that afternoon that they extended it to this Friday because people were wrestling particularly with this school issue. So we've got a couple of days to figure it out yet. And that's not to say it can't be amended down the road. But I just, I'm just looking for your guidance on that, to open that gate or not open that gate.
I proceed as if we could open it right now. But I'd also like to hear some more from Brad by Friday.
Don, how are you?
I'm in agreement. I I think we, you know, can give him or tend to really give him that amount of money. But again, with what Wayne said, I think he needs to sharpen his pencil. I know that the meetings that I've attended on from the MMA, their guidance has been that we need to prepare for a fifteen to twenty percent cut in our budget and that if you're you're looking to where you, you're looking at what budgets to look at in from the his, from historical perspective is to look at like the major pan, I had things we've had like the ice storm year and some of the others to see where some of the shortcomings were and kind of use that as a guide and not use the one-twelfth budget because you might get hit.
I'm not following.
Did I explain myself right?
I I I understand going forward that we should be game planning for a reduction in in state aid of fifteen to twenty percent, which is distinct from a reduction in twenty percent of your budget. Just so we understand that state aid for us is about a million five. So twenty percent of that is three hundred thousand dollars. That's not twenty percent of our thirty million dollar budget. Big difference. It's real and hard numbers, you know, of three hundred thousand dollars are significant for us. So I agree that that's the same message that I've been hearing from them, Don. The one-twelfth budget, we don't, we're not gonna have an option to do anything other than a one-twelfth budget. We don't have a town meeting called with time sufficient to be able to hold the town meeting and get a budget passed. Now, the one-twelfth budgets of old were problematic because they were truly, you take last year's budget, divide by twelve, and that's what you can spend each month. And in July, cities and towns were in trouble because you have certain expenses that you prepay at the beginning of the year. Your retirement assessment, which for us is just shy of a million dollars, that gets paid, you know, week one. So if we had a one-twelfth budget truly, we'd wipe out, you know, twenty-five percent of our our monthly available funds with that one thing. You have our insurances are due year one, so we've got our coverage bound. There are several, I mean, there's several issues that are that are one-time expenses that that are paid year one. So what the Commonwealth has done this year in the guidance for the one-twelfth budget is look at the last several years and the things that you have normally paid in that first month upfront lump sum. You do the one-twelfth budget and you then account for those. So I I don't think that the historical concerns people had about one-twelfth budgets are gonna visit us the same way because of that change.
Okay.
Don, so so Jim, besides the regular local aid, I think we need to be anticipating that we're gonna be losing funds in other areas that we get from the state, such as Chapter ninety.
Absolutely.
Or Chapter, yeah, so I mean, it's more than just the regular local aid. There's other things that we're gonna see reductions in.
Sure, but when we're talking about the the operating budget, which is what we're talking about when we have discussions about one-twelfth or not, Chapter ninety is outside of that. That's the road money. Chapter seventy is outside of that, that's education money. The only things that that the state has that the state is a party to in our general operating budget is our unrestricted general government local aid. It's it's the cherry sheet, the two pages. There's the page where they give and the page where they take away. You know, we have unrestricted government aid, we have reimbursement for veterans' expenses from the prior year. We have payment a little of taxes for land that the state owns, that they give us money instead of the taxes that we would get if they didn't own it. And then we have some minor assessments they charge us for, so that nets us our state aid. That's the only piece of our general government budget that state revenue has anything to do with. The the big chunk, the lion's share, is real estate. So should we be looking at the fact that people have been laid off, people have been furloughed, people are in a difficult position, and are we able to count on people paying their taxes? That's a real question. And while eventually.
And to that note, one of the things that came out of the last meeting I attended, and people didn't understand until Don explained it to them, that those folks that put off paying their excise or their real estate property taxes till the, to June thirtieth, if they don't pay it then, all of the interest penalties revert back to the original due date.
And it's and it's just pushed that nut three months or two months down the road, and the next one's coming right around the corner. So, you know, we have to, we have to look at not just the potential of a fifteen or twenty percent cut in state aid, but also what is a reasonable percentage of real estate tax that we can safely rely on collecting? What are the local receipts that we count on every year and are built into our financial model that show a one percent increase year over year? Meals tax, we're not gonna see a one percent, as scant as that is, that's not real. If anything, we're gonna be going backwards. So those are, those are the things that in the, I think the last time I forwarded off a copy of the twenty-one budget, I had the full formula by email. I had those areas in the revenue projections highlighted with notes in the margin that showed the expected cuts and reductions. I think we had plugged in a ten percent reduction in local receipts and a twenty percent reduction in state aid. So we'd be looking all in at about a three hundred fifty thousand dollar reduction in revenue for next year. That, you know, that that doesn't look pretty when you're thinking about a school budget that is fifty-five percent of your total budget, going up a half a million dollars and not being subject to any reduction.
Yeah, they gotta feel some of our pain too. Okay, next.
Yes, potential lead community for the compact grant, irrelevant. Pepperell has found a way to be the lead. So the North Middlesex Regional School District has an interest in having an assessment done of all of their real property, all of their buildings and facilities, and then an analysis done on what they need. Can things be reconfigured? Can they save space? Can they actually shed a building, which then sheds all the expense, the overhead expense of the building? Community compact grant, so that study has been applied for, likely will be funded, so there'll be no expense locally. And we'll have an answer as to what the the facilities look like probably within the year. And not listed, but a bit of good news. The long, torturous attempt at getting Comcast down to residents on Vinton Pond Road, Sona Road, Bayberry, we're we're getting closer. All of Unitil's make-ready work has been completed. So they've done all the work they need to do on their facility and infrastructure. Comcast has indicated it's a forty-five-day work window. And I'm supposed to get the when that forty-five days starts so we can actually begin to see the end of the the end of the project. So I should know this week when they're gonna have that thing pop on their schedule. But the gentleman that we're dealing with now, who is new to us, but has been a Comcast guy for the majority of his career, has been outstanding. We've tried to get this thing, a number of people, respective legal councils, the Cable Commission members themselves, any angle they could find have tried to get this done. And when this guy showed up on the scene, it was two or three calls I had with the guy and and he, no sweat, oh, we can get this done. And he's been delivering. So my my hope is that this is gonna be a a pretty short window before people are able to flip a switch.
Oh, I'd like to get it done before the school, school year.
Absolutely.
Just be prepared for that.
Absolutely. That's that, and the last is.
Jim, on a side, on a side note to that, we, back in April, I think it was the first meeting in April, we authorized you to sign the Cable Access Committee documents that were prepared. Is that all taken care of? Was there any other thing else we have to do there?
Nothing else for you. There's one more piece that the the two-B committee of the nonprofit still needed to do. I got an email on it from the attorney just today, and he's expecting to have it delivered to the Secretary of State's office by the end of the week and officially create a sanctioned nonprofit cable access corporation for the town. It it won't be a town agency, it will be a separate nonprofit, but it'll be one of those those curious animals in local government where, while they're independent, they receive their funding directly via the town who gets the funding through the franchise agreement negotiated with the cable provider. So even though they're private nonprofit, the recommendation, and it's built into their bylaws, is that they still function as though they're a municipal board. They have open meetings, they have minutes and the like. But yeah, that should be should be finalized by week's end.
Great.
Good, glad to hear.
And lastly, town meeting. We've got a date, kind of tentatively set out there, but we need to begin talking about location more seriously. And consensus with with people on staff level that I've talked to seems to be over at the Library Senior Center in the parking lot. There's additional parking available in the schools. There's power, there's restroom facilities if needed. There's ample distance to be able to, you've probably seen the pictures online of circles being drawn with six feet between the circles so people can, you know, pick their circle to attend the meeting. But holding it outside on a Saturday over at that location looks to be a consensus. And ultimately, I think it, because it's the moderator's meeting, I've never had to ask the question about whose call it is, but would you support, as a board, the recommendation that that location be pursued and finalized?
It was either that or the high school, as far as I was concerned. So that provides a little bit better location because it's away from the road than here. So I'm I'm for it, Don.
Yeah, I'm for it too.
Okay, so let's see if we're making that happen.
Can I make a comment here? This is Kathy again.
Go ahead, Kath.
Is it, is it possible to get the Board of Selectmen, Jim, the moderator, maybe EMS, fire, and police together before the meeting so we can discuss all the the logistics of everything?
Absolutely, absolutely. Once we nail the location, we then have to go into logistics planning, so absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks.
And one real last thing. I have a note on the bottom. There has historically, I gather, looking back, been a candidate's night that has been supported by the local paper. And the thing has been filmed and it's been put on the town's YouTube channel. John Barrett, in his role as moderator, had a Zoom session with the two candidates for selectmen, and it was recorded. I've received an email asking that it be placed on the town's YouTube page. I received an email asking that it be placed on the town's YouTube page. But because it's not specifically governmental and is political, I didn't feel comfortable putting it up there. But if if you feel comfortable having it put up there, I'll take guidance from you and we can get that thing loaded up onto the town's YouTube page.
I'd like to stay out of it, just to for neutrality sake. I think it's been shared enough from what I've heard.
It it's out there, yeah.
So I I don't think access to it is. Don, I don't know what you think.
Uh, yeah, I've been going back and forth on this since Jim mentioned it to me the other day and I'll have to agree, I I think we should should stay out of the political. And it is being shared quite a bit, so I don't think putting it up on our website is is the appropriate thing to do.
Um, can I say something here again? This is Kathy.
Go ahead, Kath.
I did put it up on the website under the election information. If you would like, I can remove it.
I'd say for consistency, we just, yeah, you take it off.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Kath.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Okay, 4.2 Board of Selectmen announcements. I have just one. Like to congratulate the class of 2020. I think the high school did a great job with the graduation. I attended one of them. It was rather quick, but the kids got to walk across the stage and get their diploma, so thank you for that. Don, do you have anything?
Uh, I, yeah, a couple of things I I wanted to say first, congratulations to the class of 2020 who this has been a trying year for them as well. But can we, there's a couple of things I'd like to see on the next meeting. One is IT. I I need to understand where we are. It's been a while.
Yep.
And the other is, Jim, a while ago, and I mean, this goes back to last fall, we put off doing an appointment to the Audit Committee, is that, if I remember correctly? I think we need to, now that we're getting towards the end of the year, we need to have our appointment to that committee.
You're 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 definitely straining my memory. I can go back and see exactly where we are by looking through the minutes, but yeah, we definitely get that agenda to the extent this is a vacancy.
Okay.
Okay. The other is, you mentioned under the COVID that part of it was hiring some additional personnel. I believe that back in April, I had requested and you were going to post putting up that position that we've been holding off on for facilities. Is that part of that?
That would be.
Looking at.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I did say in my earlier reporting that I was going to be asking you tonight for your approval to to put the those positions up, so yes, it would be the existing facilities tech and two part time cleaning personnel. The two part time cleaning personnel, because they're not currently budgeted, are fundable by the CARES Act. The facilities tech, because it is budgeted and had been budgeted prior to COVID, is not. But all three would be critically important to us in implementing this plan.
Okay. I have two other quick things. First, I attended the Water Department's meeting, their last meeting. And they had a concern that they're not being represented at the department head meeting because Rebecca can't be there. I had suggested, and and this is up to you, Jim, that Ryan attends so that that information get back to their department?
I believe, I believe Ryan has, I believe Ryan has attended a couple of them, Don. I'd have to go back and and look at the sign in sheet, but I I believe that he had, but absolutely. Yeah, he's
Okay.
He's next guy up.
All right. And the last was at our April meeting, uh, uh, voice meeting. You were going to look into doing the go to meeting?
Yep.
Where did that stand? And and I want to apologize for not being in the room tonight. I had expected that in the email, we would it would have mentioned that that we were gonna hold it there. I know I had said that I would, I wanted to have a a meeting there, but I never heard that that we had that it had been approved and we were gonna, that you guys were meeting in the room. So again, my apologies for not being there. But that being said, I thought we were going to have a some kind of a virtual meeting because you were attending a meeting the that very next day about this
Yep.
go to meeting.
Yeah, this this actually touches on an earlier discussion point from this meeting, which is Lee Redden. Lee actually was the staff person that went through the training and the setup and worked everything out with go to meeting. And due to things beyond her control, she wasn't able to to bring that project all the way through because she wasn't able to come to work for a good period of time. In the interim, departments began using Zoom on their own. And this will be part of the IT update at the next meeting, but Guardian Information Systems, the IT vendor that we're using, has facilitated setting up Zoom account proper for the planning and zoning boards. And I have a meeting with the principal of Guardian tomorrow morning at 10:30. And we'll be going over a number of IT issues during that transition period over the last month. One of which is the Zoom platform. To that point, one of the requests going into the state for CARES Act funding is annual subscriptions for 12 accounts for Zoom. The the recommendation from the state as well as from Guardian is that each board and commission have their own account. And that puts us at 12, so that funding request has gone in, will be funded and that'll be the the method going forward. I know that there was some concern initially about Zoom at the time of everybody needing to 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 scurry about. There had been a a security issue of some sort that was being reported with Zoom. It turned out to be not a bit of a tempest in a teapot and changes have been made to the Zoom platform that government agencies have flocked back to it. So I think at the end of the day, Don, we we've got some Zoom activity going on now and that'll be the that'll be the platform moving forward.
Okay.
Is that it, Don?
That's all I have.
Okay, um, next, we're gonna be moving into executive session. Can I get a motion, um, Don?
Uh, I make a motion that we adjourn into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Reference Fire Chief, Police Chief, uh, clerical supervision supervisory and police union.
Um, I'll second that. And we're not going to be coming back to open session.
Oh, yeah, and then we will adjourn from executive session.
And I'll second that amendment.
Are we better to do it next week then? As a one off and be face to face?
Yeah, Don, with your permission, I I think we can push this off to the next meeting. So they can have be it face to face because we can't do it over a secure line here. An unsecure line.
Yep. That's okay, that's fine with me. I'll wait till the next one.
Okay, so we'll push this to our next meeting. If that's.
Set it, set it at the next meeting. We can do it even next, you wanna do next week?
Yeah, let's have a separate meeting next week, Don. Or you're gonna be away.
Let me. Uh, no, I'll be I'll be back, but I have to go into Boston for two days. Let me just check my calendar, so what day you do it? 16th?
We'll look.
Tuesday, the 16th, yeah?
Yeah, anytime during the day.
That can be day, day or night, too.
Uh, night would be preferable now.
Okay.
Six o'clock? Just executive?
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn then?
I make a motion that we adjourn at 8:00 PM.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Don Klein, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. And thank you for everybody who attended, even the dog. That was funny.
And the microwave, whoever it was.
All right, good night, everybody.